Okay, welcome. For those who are attending live, I've shared some information in the chat section. And for those who are watching recording, you can look below in the description section for some information on these calls. We are going to begin with an intention, move into some connected breathing, and then finish with a little check-in to the body, a little somatic experience. So, to begin, I recommend you have some water and Kleenex nearby. Find a comfortable position where you could sit or lie down, where you can relax, but you're not likely to fall asleep. I want you to be very relaxed, but still be conscious, completely aware, and be present for the experience. So, as we begin, once you find a comfortable place to sit or lie down, where you can breathe nice deep breaths into the belly. Your spine can be nice and tall and straight, your body's open, not hunched over. And we're going to begin with setting an intention for your experience. So, in general, I always invite the intention of gratitude, to just bring something into your awareness that you have a deep sense of appreciation for. And this is the same way I recommend starting every day. Waking up, and before you grab your phone and get into your to-do list, just remember what you have to be grateful for, that you have a bed to wake up in, that you have shelter, food. Showing appreciation, just bringing to your awareness the loved ones you have in your life, your friends and your family. And that you're in a place to participate in an experience like this, which is supporting your health and wellbeing. Secondly, I want to invite a contemplation of something that makes you feel good. So let's start by finding your comfortable position and letting your eyes gently close. And to begin, think of something, a memory to start with, something from your past that makes you feel good. A time when you have a very pleasant memory. Could be a very positive experience you had. Could be an incredible meal that you enjoyed. Could be an intimate experience. Could be a funny movie. Just think of something that really makes you feel good. Maybe it was a big win, a very successful experience you had. And once again, bringing to your awareness loved ones. Maybe time in nature. A beautiful vacation. Take your time with this. I'm sharing a lot of examples, but I want you to just allow yourself to flow into a memory of something that was very uplifting for you. And if you just try to think back, when was something that really made me feel good? I felt elated. Something very pleasurable. Something really fun. Maybe something very relaxing, a spa day, some time at the beach. A massage that you enjoyed. So, setting this intention for yourself to really raise your vibration. To elevate your energy by considering something that just feels so good. So be in your inner experience and allow these memories to flow, and sometimes just focusing on one good feeling brings others up. You can start to have this domino effect of pleasurable memories and sensations. And just noticing in your body, anything that feels good right now in your physical self. Something that feels relaxed, a part of your body that feels just solid and stable, pleasant. And at the same time, allow the breath to become a little slower and fuller. So we're building off of this sense of gratitude and adding onto it the sense of pleasure and enjoyment, these positive feelings. During the experience, I'm going to invite you to come back to this. So we're going to anchor that in right now by taking a nice deep breath in. Imagine breathing in these positive feelings, these good memories, these sensations. This sense of pleasure, success, these uplifting emotions. I want you to breathe it in and hold it, and at the same time make a fist. As you're clenching your fist, you're anchoring in this positive emotion. Breathe it in. Hold it in, squeeze that fist, anchor it, remember the sensation. And at the same time, think of a word or a short phrase that sums this up for you. Whatever comes to your mind, just some power word. Allow this to become part of your anchor, this positive feeling. And relax. And then still sitting with this feeling, allow that feeling to build up. Imagine that you have a dial where you can turn up the intensity of this positive emotion. And just start to turn up the dial on this positive feeling. Give yourself some time for this. Letting go of any of this speediness from your day. Any sense of busyness, letting that fall away as you slow down. Allow the breathing to become a little slower and fuller, in the nose. Down into your belly. Placing a hand on your stomach and let your belly become very relaxed and full. As the breath moves down and expands your abdomen like a balloon expanding and filling up, in through the nose. Down into your belly, soft and full, slow and deep. Slowly turning up the dial on that good feeling, bringing up the intensity, taking your time to really allow this pleasant feeling to move through your entire body. If there's one particular positive memory or feeling, sensation or image that feels really potent for you, really lean into that and allow that feeling to flood out through your whole body. Now imagine if that feeling of positivity or a ball of light above your head, a ball of positive energy just above your head. I want you to just visualize that, whether it shows up as an image for you, whether it's simply a sensation or an imagining that there's this ball of energy above you. Really feel that energy. And when you're ready, without any rush, allow it to slowly wash down in through your head, taking its time to slowly move through your entire brain, rewiring healthy neural pathways, triggering those pleasure centers, those feel-good centers, so that they can start to become wired together. Allowing that good feeling, that energy to wash down through your shoulders, down through your chest and your back, taking your time to allow this warm energy to move down through your chest, back, belly. Your whole torso filled with this positive energy and vibration. Slow, full breaths into the nose. Down into the belly. And allow that energy to wash down now through your hips and your legs. A sense of relaxation washing over you as well. And as you allow that positive energy to move all the way down through your legs, through the bottoms of your feet, feel yourself connected to the surface below you, whether you're sitting or lying. Imagine energetic roots moving down through the bottoms of your feet into the earth so that you are fully supported, fully connected, anchored, safe, secure. And so that your entire body is filled with this positive energy. Breathing deep, full breaths in through the nose, down into the belly. And allow these next few breaths to become a little deeper and fuller, so that after you inflate the belly, it rises up into the rib cage and up into the chest. So you're filling the cup from the belly up. And then let it overflow with no hold at the top, just let go. From the nose or mouth, release. And then once you exhale, minimize the pause at the bottom. You're not waiting for the next breath. Let that inspiration begin again down in the belly. In through the nose, filling the belly, rising up to the chest. No hold at the top. No pause at the bottom. Deep and full. Letting go. Breathing in through the nose, letting the breath start down in the diaphragm and the belly. And connecting the breath so that there's minimal pause at the top or bottom. Just fall into these next few breaths like this. Deep, full breaths from the belly. No pause or hold at the top. Once you exhale, right back to the top again. Continue to breathe, and as you hear the music fading, allow your body to relax, falling more deeply into your inner experience. Becoming aware of sensations. Emotions. And allowing yourself to be fully present to whatever unfolds for you. Deep, full, connected breaths. And as we begin to raise the vibration by bringing in a little higher energy music, I'm going to invite you to begin breathing in beats. Listening for the beat of the music. And matching your breath with the music. Breathing in for four beats. And exhaling for four beats. And as we progress, continuing to raise your vibration and elevate your energy, we'll be increasing that tempo to two beats in and out. And then to one beat in and out. As I offer those cues, listening for the beat of the drum. And breathing in for four, in, two, three, four, out, two, three, four. In the nose, two, three, four, out the mouth, two, three, four. Inhale, two, three, four, exhale, two, three, four. Into the belly, all the way up into the chest, and then relax and release, letting go. In for four beats on the inspiration. Out for four beats on the exhale. If you fall off your flow, you lose your groove, that's okay. Just have fun with it, be gentle with yourself. Listen for that beat. And come back to four beats in. Four beats out. Listening. Breathing. And feeling, whatever feelings or emotions arise, give them space to be fully experienced. In for four beats, feel that beat. Out for four. Allowing your awareness to move more into your inner experience. Imagine you are completely disinterested into your thoughts. Losing interest in the artifacts of your brain activity. Thoughts come and go. But you're very curious about body sensations. Breathing in for four, out for four. Becoming very curious about emotions. Really invested in listening to the music, feeling that vibration of sound in your body. Adjust the tempo and intensity of your breath to get in a nice, deep, full breath within those four beats. Relaxing it completely with four beats. Nothing else to think about, nothing to control. Not even trying to fix or solve anything right now. Not trying to get anywhere or accomplish anything with this in this moment. Just breathing. This next breath. And the next one. The rhythm. The breath. And your sensations. And as I allow the space between my speaking to become longer, allow yourself to sink more deeply into the rhythm, connecting more deeply with your breath. Feel that beat. Four in, four out. You may notice thoughts arising, you may find yourself drifting into a daydream. Or thinking of your to-do list, or what comes next, and that's okay. But now that you notice that, create an intention to very gently, very naturally, allow your awareness to fall back into listening, feeling, breathing. Releasing ease in that one compelling thought that keeps coming back, just for now. Knowing that you can always revisit it at another time. With each breath, bringing in positive energy. With every exhale, relaxing even more deeply. In, two, three, four, and out, two, three, four. On your own pace. Find your four beats, find your flow. In a few breaths, we're going to increase that tempo, to two beats in, two beats out. As we raise the vibration, elevating your energy, this will increase the intensity slightly, and bring a lot of energy and oxygen into your body. Listening for that beat again, and as it comes back, we're going to breathe in for two and out for two. In, two, out, two. Belly up, relax, release. In the nose, out the mouth. Inhale, exhale, in, out. Keep breathing. Feel that beat, follow that rhythm. Two in, two out, into the belly, up to the chest, and then release. Allowing yourself to be pulled into the music, into that vibration, into the sounds. Fully immersing yourself with the vibration of sound and the sensations of breath. In for two, out for two. If you fall off your flow, just listen for the beat of the drum, come back to the beat, come back to the two beats in, two beats out. Deep, full, connected breaths, like a wave rising, cresting, falling. And the next wave, rising, cresting, falling, connected. Circular. Rhythmic. Coming back to listening. Notice any sensations or emotions that are arising, give them space. We're just here to breathe together, come back to the breath. Notice if you're getting ahead of yourself, just come back to this breath. And the next breath. Just the breath, just each breath. Allowing the breath to begin to breathe you. The longer you do this, the more it becomes like an automatic rhythm. Allowing that beat to carry the breath in for two. And out for two. Nothing to think about. Immerse yourself into this vibration, into these waves of breath. Into your sensations, into your body, out of the head. In a few more breaths, we're going to increase the tempo and the intensity one more time, breathing in and out on the beat. Very soon, but only for a short while. Stay with these next few breaths, make them count. In for two and out for two. Getting ready. And we feel that beat come in strong. We're going to go in and out, on the beat, one in, one out. Leading up to our breath hold. Here we go. In, out, in, out. Inhale, exhale, in, out. We're almost there. This is going to be a short one. It's intense, but it's brief. You can do this. If you're on the edge of something, see if you can breathe through it. If you feel like you're falling, see if you can trust fall right into your own experience. Out of the mind, into the body, in and out on the beat. Feel that drum beat. In, out, in, out, in, out. Almost there. A few more breaths, make these count, nice and strong. And we're going to slow it down for two or three big ones before we hold, slowing down, slowing down. Here we go. Deepest, fullest breath you've taken all week. Here we go. And again. We're going to take one last big inhale before we exhale and hold. Breathe it in as deep as you can. Now I want you to gently release, letting it go, slowly let go, and hold it out. Holding the breath out. And just stop. Empty yourself. Settling into emptiness, relaxing. Not straining to hold, but gently softening yourself. And if you need to breathe before give the cue, you can take a breath in and let it go again. But come back to emptiness, come back to stillness, fall into silence, and notice those waves of sensation and vibration washing over you as you settle. Feeling what it is to be completely empty. To be still. To be free. Bringing back to your awareness that positive energy that we fostered at the beginning. Those feelings of gratitude, success, pleasure. All of those positive feelings. And clenching your fist, bringing back that power anchor. Breathe it in and hold it in now. Inhale. Hold it in. Holding, and remember your power word or your power phrase. It summarizes this positive energy. This raising of vibration, elevating of your energy, making that fist, hold it in. Remember all of those positive memories and sensations, those good vibrations, allow them to wash over your whole body as you hold it in. Rewiring those healthy neural pathways, upgrading your DNA. Moving through every cell in the body. Feel it. It feels good. Let yourself feel good. It's okay to feel good. And noticing, is there anything that your body no longer needs, any heaviness, any stuckness in the body? Any limiting beliefs? Any charged emotions that you want to let go of? Let them go with a big sigh, a big tone, moan, or groan now. Breathing. And for those of you who are holding back a little, a little hesitation around making some sound, just take one more big breath in and really make some sound on that exhale. Feel the vibration of your own voice, breathing in. Tone it out. And just breathe. And if you're still holding that fist, you can relax your hands. Just release control and allow that vibration to move through you naturally. Listening and feeling. And as you just let the breath breathe itself now. Begin to bring more curious attention, gentle, relaxed, curious attention into your body, into sensations. Beginning with any and all sensations in your head, in your face, neck. Notice all of the sensations in your head and face. Inviting relaxation. Welcoming this good energy to move through the entire head. Allowing that awareness of sensation to move down through your shoulders, your arms. Slowing down again, really letting the heart rate slow down. Slowing down again, really letting the heart rate slow down. Letting your body relax, notice your jaw unhinged and your shoulders drop. Sinking into your body. Feel those vibrations and sensations in your arms, right down to the tips of your fingers. Slowing down, becoming still. Breathing even slower, relaxing more deeply. Feel the weight of your arms resting on your body or the surface that you're resting on. And moving your awareness into sensations in your torso. Your chest. Your back. Feel the breathing. Your chest and your belly. Any sensations, just noticing them. And breathing in that good vibration. Relaxing more deeply on the exhale. Noticing there's always another layer of relaxation available to you. Giving yourself permission to sink in another layer, deeper, deeper into yourself. And allowing that awareness of sensation to naturally and gently move down through your hips. Your thighs. And into your lower body. Take your time, just noticing any sensations in your legs. From your hips right down to the toes. Let your legs become relaxed and heavy. Feel the fullness of your legs. Now in the next breath, we're gonna take a long, deep, full breath and imagine pulling that good energy up through your legs, up through your whole body inclusively. Feeling your whole body on the inhale now. Inhale, bring it in. Very briefly hold it in as you notice that vibration moving through your whole body. Just see how it feels. To have a body right now. Relax, breathe. Continue to be aware of your entire body as one whole piece. How does it feel to have a body? How does my body feel? Just being aware of any and all sensations flowing throughout your entire body. It's almost like a massage for your nervous system. Feeling the vibration of sound moving through your body. All of that beautiful oxygen and energy that you brought in circulating throughout. And all that good vibration that you intentionally manifested. As the feel-good hormones, dopamine, endorphins, epinephrine, all flushing through your system. And as we are aware of our body, also checking in, is there anywhere where we're feeling a little contracted? Where might you notice some heaviness in your body right now? Are there any charged emotions or strong sensations? Any tension? Discomfort? And if it's very uncomfortable or intense to feel, imagine you're just sitting beside that sensation, observing it from just outside. Just noticing, where am I holding on? What part of my body is a little contracted right now? And whereas we may normally try to numb or fix or distract ourselves from this. Imagine that you are listening to your body in this moment. Understanding that this is how it communicates with you, through sensations, through emotions. So give it the honor of really listening, really feeling. Where is that charged sensation? Where is that discomfort? Where is that contraction? Is it moving? Is it constant? Are there any images or memories, shapes or colors that arise in your mind's eye when you pay attention to this? Are there any emotions associated with it? Take your time to be with it. Relax the breath, let it happen, the breath is just breathing itself. And we can give ourselves this opportunity to feel it, to heal it. And what if you were to really inquire with your body, with this sensation, what does it need from you? What is it trying to communicate to you? Just feeling your body and understanding that the answer may not come with words, but just paying attention. Maybe you'll have a sense that you need to slow down. Or maybe it's time to take action. Maybe you just need more water. Maybe you need more sleep. Maybe it's time to be alone with yourself. Maybe you need to connect with friends. Maybe you need to feel these feelings that you've been suppressing. Forgive yourself. Love yourself. Just listening. And maybe nothing comes up for you, but you're just asking, checking in. Trusting that the answer will come intuitively when the time is right. Really connecting with your body. And then just offering a sense of deep gratitude for your physical self. For being there through your whole life. From your very first. Until your very last. Offering. Apologies for how hard you've sometimes maybe pushed yourself. Or judged yourself. Or your body. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Thank you, thank you, thank you, I love you. Just offering yourself in this moment, love. For being here. And knowing that you can come back to connect with yourself in this way at any time. Let's come back to that charged emotion, that strong sensation, to see if it feels any different. Taking a nice, deep breath into that space in the body, breathe into it. Deep, 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 full, 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 holding, holding, holding. Feel that tightness, that contraction beginning to expand, opening it up. Allowing that tight energy to circulate through the body, that's your energy, you can own it, you can bring it in now. And then let it go, let it go with a big sigh. And just take a moment to breathe and notice how that stuck energy is beginning to circulate and flow now. Integrating it into your system. Don't need to contain it and contract it, separate it. And finally, before we close, once again, coming back to those feelings of gratitude, positivity, high vibration. Gonna breathe that in one more time. Hold it in, make that fist. Hold it, squeeze it. Remember those good memories, those good feelings, those good sensations, remember your power word or phrase that you came up with. And exhale, relaxing. Normalizing feeling good. Reminding yourself it's okay to feel good. And remembering this tool that you can take with you into the week. Couple of deep breaths under hold, make a fist, remember your word or phrase, you can come right back to the state. Anytime you feel good or something positive happens, you can add to this anchor. And just noticing the music fading. Listening to the silence between sounds. Coming back to an awareness of your body. Awareness of the space around you. Really noticing those points of contact where you're connected, supported by the surface that you're sitting or lying on. Take one more big breath in and out as we close. And without any rush at all, in your own perfect timing, you can gently open your eyes. And as we close, reminding yourself that. Opening your eyes doesn't mean we need to come back to the business of the mind, you can stay in this connection with your body. With your breath. Can remain in this slow down, relaxed state. And take that with you into the rest of the evening or the rest of the week, if you so choose. And as we close, I want to thank you for participating. We're gonna have an opportunity for those who are on the call live to share if they feel called to in the chat or live. For those who are watching the recording, look forward to connecting next week. Again, there are some links and information in the chat and in the description of the video. Reminder to carry this positive energy with you, remember you have that power anchor available to you. Sending you big love and light, lots of virtual hugs. And I'm going to close the video. And I will connect with you all here on the call a little more. Thank you.